Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Peristam?
Yes.
Mayor Protimseho?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our public comments for non-agenda items, and I do have four requests to speak. Our first speaker is Carol Mueller.
Hello, Carol. Good evening. Come on up. Oh, sorry.
And I'm tired. And I'm tired of being jerked around. Every time I talk to somebody, it's their fault. It's our fault. They do it. They do it. You know, somebody needs to tell us who's going to regulate this. Cleaning up, if your neighbor has a tree that's on their property, and the branches hang on your roof, who's responsible? I know you don't want to answer it. That's the way we get things going at City Council these days. But, you know, we need some answers.
Are you, do you want to respond to that question?
Do you, the brush clearance or?
No. If a, if a tree from a neighbor's, if a branch from a neighbor's tree is on somebody else's roof, who is responsible for maintaining that tree?
If it's on the neighbor's
ground.
Property, it's, the neighbor can go in and trim it. It's, it's in your airspace.
If they don't, and you do, then you can get sued if you kill a tree.
Yes. Carol, we will take that offline and, and we will get you an answer. We will, we will work with you on that. But there are procedures for something like that.
Well, it seems like the procedures are kind of screwed up these days. And I don't know if it's true or not. I hear RPVs broke. They say LA's broke. The state of California is broke. Now I heard on the radio that all of the legals are, can't afford to stay here, so they're going to the other states now. They're not very happy about that.
Thank you, Carol.
Our next speaker is Bill Gersner.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bill.
Bill Gersner, if you don't remember me, I've done my job by hiding out. Something's come up, and I had a newsletter that the PvP Watch was happy enough to put out. I've been the victim of mail theft at the post office. Some of you might have seen that. And so it upset me, to say the least. To tell the story really quickly, a tax refund check was stolen out of my post office box in the post office at the top of the hill. Working through the cycles of that, eventually, six months later, got the Post, the US Treasury to reissue the check. They insisted on sending it to the same post office, which I suggested to them was a bad idea. It was a bad idea because that check was stolen again. To date, it still remains gone. The point of this is not my check, my money, or my issues with the IRS, the US Treasury, or anything. It is we have a post office where we have someone stealing checks. And as I talk to people about this issue, the general reaction I get is, oh, yeah, we all know about this. Everybody knew about it except for Bill. I've spoken with the FBI. I've worked with, I'm currently working with the US Postal Inspection Service. I've got a, an email address at stolenmail.com, my name, Bill, at stolenmail.com, where I'm trying to collect other people that have had similar problems at our post office. Because as it's explained to me by Postal Inspection Services, we have bigger cases than yours. I can handle this. I can figure out my way through it. But we have a lot of people in this community that can't, that might never know that their check was stolen. And based on the emails I've received to date, it's a significant number of people. A lot of it are checks they've sent to pay their property taxes that disappear, get stolen, get washed, and get reissued. We found my check down at the US Navy Credit Union. I talked to the branch manager. He found me before I, before I was able to even make the claim that it was stolen. It was taken by someone. My name was signed for cashing by a gentleman by the name of Glenn Owens. And the bank manager thought it looked suspicious, and he didn't give the money to Mr. Owens, although he has to cash it because it looks, it is a legitimate check. And so the IRS doesn't have the money. The US Treasury doesn't have the money. The bank has the money in a special account, and Mr. Owens does not have the money. And then one person who's supposed to have the money, me, definitely does not have the money. So there's a very complicated procedure. I know I'm not necessarily laying that out. What I'm asking today is that we try to make people aware of this. I am happy to consolidate this information. I'm happy to lead the charge with Postal Inspection Services. But we have someone in the post office that is taking checks because my post office box is in the post office.
Understood, Bill. Thank you very much. And I do believe that we put out a public service announcement alerting to folks to it. And, you know, I was not aware of this before we had our conversation a week or two ago. But we are trying to alert everyone, and I appreciate PV Watch for also putting out that, that notice to their distribution as well.
I'll encourage people to send emails to me, and I'll get this consolidated and possibly come see you guys again.
Thank you, Bill.
Can we put a notice in our bulletin? I mean, our
The quarterly newsletter?
Yeah.
We can certainly do that. We've put it in the weekly report. We've done social media posts on it. In fact, in my city manager's report, I'm going to just talk about the tax refund checks and what to do to try to prevent these incidents from happening.
We should put that on the list for the quarterly newsletter. Make sure Matt has that as a article.
And, Mr. Mayor, I should say, I've been in contact with the captain, Captain Guerrero, from the Lomita Station, who is aware of these incidents and this specific incident, and continues to remind residents to be vigilant and to report these crimes to the US Postal Inspection Services. They do have their own law enforcement division within the postal system.
Ara, can, if you can get the information from him.
Sure.
We'll talk offline, so you can package that up for my day job.
I know how to get in touch with Mr. Gersner.
Our next speaker is Mickey Rodich.
Okay, Mickey, come on down.
Don't be shy. I'm here against the installation of charging stations at La Dura Linda Park that was on the agenda last meeting. First of all, when La Dura Linda Park was being specked out before approval, there were supposedly seven EV charging spaces planned, and they were Level 1, which is the lowest level, which takes two to three hours to charge a vehicle. This makes no sense. Who is going to come to La Dura Linda and wait two to three hours to charge their vehicle? Maybe RPV can add a Starbucks at La Dura Linda draw following, and they would have some activity. This is a sign of poor staff and/or consultant planning when the park was originally designed. Waste of our money. The three different levels of charging require different voltage capacities. And now it would require a major expenditure to change the voltage at La Dura Linda to bring it to a Level 2 system. Even if the park was equipped for Level 2 charging, it still does not make sense. Who will be using the charging stations? We have residents in our community at La Dura Linda that have electric vehicles. Every one of them has their own charger. What benefit would they receive by using the one at La Dura Linda Park? Nothing. It would not be more convenient for them. They would not save any money either. Absolutely saving none. RPV does not want it to be in the EV charging business. This idea is a terrible business model. Our priorities should be on the landslide and the residents who are suffering as a result of the landslide that will be with us for, the landslide will be with us forever and not on EV charging stations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey.
Our next speaker is via Zoom, Eva Albuja.
Ara, when is the EV charging station item going to come back before us for La Dura Linda? I can't remember on which agenda, because I know we did send staff back to answer some questions.
Yes, I believe it's May 20th. Yes, May 20th.
Okay. So Mickey, make a note of that. May 20th is we'll hear that item again.
Good evening, Mayor Bradley, city members, city staff, city council members. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. Good evening. Great. Okay, so the first item is, I would, I'm requesting an official letter written and sent by the city to CalGas. CalGas originally said the first two weeks, we're going to have gas in the Seaview District. And they are lingering. Now it's, there's talks that may be in May, and it may be later. We need to put them on notice. We need them in writing, not emails, not phone calls, not, you know, conversations. Put them on written notice that we need an official date when the gas is going to be turned on, please. I mean, it's been long enough that all of us have had no gas in Seaview and Portuguese Bend Beach Club. It's a hardship, cold showers, and no cooking. I mean, this is ridiculous. I mean, you can't say they already, they already went in. They already did their inspections. Their trucks are gone. What's the holdup? That's my first request. My second request is an official letter to go to the governor of our state of California to add us on to the mandatory underground electrical wiring because we are in a fire hazard area. He is doing that for the victims that had suffered from the fires. We should be included in that mandatory zone. Official letter, again, sent to the office should be done as soon as possible to include that with us. And the third item is the house on the corner of Exultant and Dauntless. You have approved the cost of the demo of that. We have heard nothing of updates of when that's going to happen. Please give us notice at least two weeks, because I don't want to live through the demo of that. I'm afraid of all the asbestos and any type of air quality is going to be poor during that time. So please give us notice when that's going to happen. And please have that done before the next winter season because we don't want more troubles with that corner home. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment on the third item regarding the house at the corner. We are in conversations with the legal owners, legal counsel, and we're working things out to, in order to go in and do the abatement and demolish the structure. We will, of course, notify all the residents HOA so that they know when, when that demolition occurs. We're also looking at the other property as well, next door.
Good.
I would just add, with respect to Exultant, we've just got confirmation from their legal counsel that they will give us permission to enter the property and demolish the property. The issue, the issue outstanding is who pays for that?
Correct.
The property owner is more than happy to let us come in and demolish the property for their benefit. We've made it very clear to them that we will do that, but we will seek recovery of those total costs. And we're at the point where we're trying to enter into a written agreement that gives us consent to enter the property, and they will reimburse the city the cost of doing that. I think that's going to be forthcoming. So we will certainly have this done before the next winter season, and hopefully much sooner than that.
Yeah, I know that staff has been working for both of the red-tagged houses at the corner of Exultant and Dauntless with a long-term solution to demolish those, since those are obviously unlivable and broken in multiple pieces, and come to a long-term solution of who owns them and the demolition. So, yeah, we just need to do that with all haste. Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Our next item is the city manager report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and our viewing audience. Welcome back. I think this is the first meeting, official meeting, that we're all together since our visit to Sakura City, our sister city.
Wait a second, you weren't here at the last meeting?
I was not here on April 1st. It was my April Fool's joke. So welcome back.
Catherine did such a great job, we didn't even notice.
I heard, I heard, of course.
Well, we noticed Catherine did a great job, though.
Except she sat on the wrong side of the room, but.
Next time she'll sit over here. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to steal your thunder, but with my report, I'd like to start off echoing your sentiments regarding Whale of Day. It's our, it was our 40th anniversary, another milestone celebration that the city honored and celebrated. And I want to also echo our greatest congratulations to Dan, Emily, Lisa, Andrew, and Josh, and the entire Recreation and Parks team. They were working, hustling, moving around, just making sure. It was another successful event, especially for the 40th anniversary, that everything seemed seamless. Like the mayor said, we walked around. We were talking to a lot of different residents and all the booths that were there, the sponsors. We actually walked over to the lighthouse. We were able to take a look at the property. It was open. And we learned that it's going to be the 100th anniversary for the lighthouse next year, May 2026. So we'll work with the Coast Guard and staff and do something special for them next year. So just again, I just want to say thank you for a great day, another milestone, another memorable event. And speaking of memorable events, I think yesterday, yesterday morning, many of you may have received an alert on your phone from your My Shake app because I keep telling you every single time, you need to download that app. And there was that alert that.
How long were you under your desk for?
I was under my desk for 30 seconds when I realized I wasn't, this must be a false alarm, or I'm not going to feel anything. So, yes, I was far enough from the epicenter. But in all seriousness, if you don't have the My Shake app, please download it. It's available on both the Apple Store and the Google Store. It is to alert you whenever you're in the geographic region of a 4.5 or larger magnitude earthquake. You may have one second. You may have 10 seconds to take cover. It's really important that you download this app. It has a lot of potential to really save you in something catastrophic.
And yesterday, it worked, at least for me, flawlessly. I had multiple alerts through multiple devices. So, which had not always happened in the past, giving forewarning. And I was just, anecdotally, some of my friends up and down the coast between here and San Diego all had the same reaction. Some felt it here on the peninsula. I didn't feel anything. But, yeah, that, really well done for an app like that.
Yes, so we'll continue to promote and raise awareness and encourage residents to download this app. Next slide. So we've got, we've got a pretty busy week ahead of us. Actually, the next two weeks are really busy with a lot of city items. Tomorrow night, at the City Hall, we are going to have the Palis Verdis Nature Preserve Quarterly Public Forum Meeting. This happens every quarter, and it's an opportunity, if you have comments or want to know what's happening in the Palis Verdis Nature Preserve, to participate. You can participate in person by going to City Hall, the community room, or participating via Zoom, and that's tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Next slide. And then on Thursday, you know, we're, we are in the budget season. We're, we're conducting budget workshops. Thursday is going to be our workshop number two, where we're actually going to receive a report on the general fund. The council will receive the estimates of where we are at in terms of the current fiscal year. And then you'll, you'll receive a report on the assumptions for fiscal year '25, '26. So we look forward, if you're interested in following what's happening budget-wise and financially with your city, especially when it comes to the general fund, which are our operations of the city, you could come back here at Hess Park on Thursday at 6:00 PM or participate via Zoom. And you can go to the city's website to get the information to participate virtually. Next slide. And then on Saturday, April 26th, you know, we are doing a lot in response to the wildfires that happened in January. We want to raise awareness. We want the community to be prepared. So we had a town hall in February, and Assembly Member Murasucci wanted to host a town hall for the entire peninsula. So on Saturday, April 26th, from 9:00 to noon here at Hess Park, Assembly Member Murasucci has pulled together a team of panelists from the LA County Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, the utility companies, the insurance commissioner, who will be speaking to residents for, from the entire Palis Verdis Peninsula. So mark your calendars. If you missed our town hall, this is another great opportunity to learn more about wildfire preparedness. Next slide. And the third and final budget workshop will be held on Wednesday, April 29th, at 6:00 PM here in Hess Park. This workshop will cover the capital improvement program, which is going to look very different than the years past because of all the costs we've incurred in regards to the landslide program as part of the CIP. So we're going to get into, roll up our sleeves and look at what we can do and how we can look at the next year and the next four years, because it is a five-year program. So if you're interested in following things related to the capital and our capital improvements, come back here on Tuesday, April 29th, at 6:00 PM, and you could participate virtually as well. Next slide. And that, that following Wednesday on April 30th, we're going to have another meeting here at Hess Park, and this is to talk about CAL FIRE's maps that they just put out on the high fire severity zones. As you know, we are in a high fire severity zone, the entire peninsula. CAL FIRE has been going up and down the entire state and remapping those fire zone maps. And there's a new set of maps that are out, and I think a lot of people have questions regarding why certain areas are included, why certain areas are now being taken out of the severity zone. This is going to be an informational session. We've asked LA County Fire Department, as well as the Forestry Division, to attend, to answer questions, and to provide more information on how they, the approach and how they came up with the design or this layout of the maps. Next slide. And we have two more weekends left of EDCO's Spring Brush Clearance Event. If you have your collection day on Thursday, that's, you can pull all your yard clippings and all your brush clearing that you've done on the property, put it on the curb for this Saturday, April 19th. EDCO will come pick it up at no extra charge to residents. And if your collection day is on Fridays, the, the collection day for brush clearing will be on Saturday, April 26th. And, and I know we were just talking with the public speaker about the, the mail fraud and the tax checks. I just wanted to take a few minutes here just to remind residents, you know, today is April 15th. Apropos, although you don't need to file today, if you're in LA County, you can file October 15th. But I think it's worthwhile to just remind residents on some tax safety tips. And if, Nathan, if you can go to the next slide, I'm going to just go through this real, real quickly here. We have this available on social media, on the city's website. But first and foremost, I think people, you should be seeking direct deposits for any refund checks. That really helps prevent any theft or anyone getting into your mailbox or anything, request for direct deposit. If you are anticipating a mailed check, you should be watching, tracking the delivery of your, your mail. You can actually subscribe to the US Postal Service. They have, they have a service where you can see what gets delivered in your mail. Many people need to also swap out their mailboxes and put in locked mailboxes at their residence. That's always a good thing to do. You never know who's going around checking mailboxes. If you are filing or sending any payments to the post office, you may want to consider doing a priority mail or certified mail so that you know where it's at and when it gets delivered. The other thing is many people, especially our aging population, they get calls and they somehow think that the IRS is asking for a certain information or critical information, and they give out a lot of information. Do not do that. Make sure you, you talk to your, your parents, and, and you just remind yourself, don't give out any information. IRS does not call you asking for information. All these, all these tips we have available on the city's website. We're also going to have it in the weekly report. Next slide. And on Tuesday, April 22nd, is Happy Earth Day. And so what we want to just remind residents that you who live here in Rancho Palis Verdis are very fortunate. You are in an area where we have 1,500 acres of open space in our Palis Verdis Nature Preserve. We have over 33 miles of trails. We have gorgeous parks. Please take advantage of it, especially on Tuesday, April 22nd. And last slide, I know we, Passover began on Saturday at sundown, and I just want to recognize those celebrating Passover, and Easter is this weekend, so happy Easter to everyone. So that concludes my report for this council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Our next item is the consent calendar. I do have one request to speak on item, item letter F.
F, as in Frank? Or Flamingo? Okay.
Well, would we move approval of the other items, and then we can hear item letter F?
So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item F?
So moved. Second. Move second.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peristam?
Yes.
Mayor Protimseho?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item letter F. Would you like me to call the speaker, Mayor?
Yes.
Our speaker is via Zoom, Eva Albuja.
Eva, are you there?
Okay, I'm here now.
You flash. There you, there you are.
Okay. Hi, guys. Good evening again. So I just want to say thank you again for everything you've done with the landslide. It's, it's every day that we drive on the roads and we see all that's been done with the D wells and all the action items that has come up. It has improved greatly, and I would like to say thank you for that. One thing is that communication with the meetings that you have on Wednesday is huge. And we are only, the residents, the ones in the landslide, only allowed to attend one meeting, not both meetings. And it seems like the information is not being communicated, what's happening with the other Wednesday meeting. Again, I want to stress that the gas communication of to turn on is not being communicated. So please assist on that. The other item is, please keep in mind when you're voting today that PB Drive South is a crucial part for our sewerage systems and that please keep in mind that we've got to continue our efforts that we have achieved so far so we can continue having the savage of that PB Drive South and also having the sewer work properly and also help all the residents in the landslide district continue being able to live there, the ones that have survived so far. So again, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Eva.
Shall we vote on this item now?
Yeah, I don't know what's the pleasure of the rest of the council. Do you want to see the staff report on this item, or you want to move on, right on to approval?
Approval.
Move approval.
A motion, a movement, a motion? Motion movement?
I already moved approval.
One second.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peristam?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Mayor Protimseho?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our public hearing item. Number one, consideration to conduct the 2024 Annual Review of the Trump National Golf Club's Compliance with Its Maintenance Obligations, case number PLMH2025-0001. Late correspondence was distributed earlier, and we noticed that the public hearing was duly published. And I currently do not have, forgive me, I have the applicant and one request to speak.
Okay. So I will declare the public hearing open, and let's have the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. As stated, the project before you this evening is a request to receive and file a report regarding Trump National Golf Club's compliance with its maintenance obligations pursuant to the amended and restated declaration of restrictions, or maintenance agreement essentially, that was approved by the city council most recently in 2018. Pursuant to this agreement, the applicant is required to maintain the trails and amenities in the Ocean Trails Reserve in addition to parks, parking lots, other public trails, and other amenities at the Trump National Golf Club. The reserve at Trump National, named Ocean Trails, is approximately 113 acres in size and is one of 11 reserves that make up the larger Palis Verdis Nature Preserve. Here you can see the location of the various trails that are within the Ocean Trails Reserve. Excuse me. So as stated in 2018, the most recent version of the maintenance agreement stated, among other things, you know, what Trump National Golf Course is responsible for maintaining. However, one of the However, one of the specific conditions that required staff to track maintenance responses and also time, timeliness of maintenance responses was in that resolution and in that maintenance agreement. So staff at that time did create a maintenance matrix to track these complaints as well as the applicant's responses. There are several types of typical recurring issues that are addressed by the applicant on an ongoing basis. These include vandalism and graffiti, deterioration of signage on site, unauthorized spur trails through the native habitat, as well as overgrown vegetation. And just as an update, you know, after the agenda distribution, the city staff and applicant were able to update and streamline the maintenance matrix. Per staff's calculations, approximately 89% of the issues that were reported within the last year have been completed or they continue to be addressed on an ongoing basis because of the frequency of recurrence. And then again, several issues that come up very frequently, such as graffiti, vandalism of signage, et cetera, are addressed by Trump National Staff on an ongoing weekly basis. And since last year's meeting, staff has continued regular meetings with the applicant, informal meetings to stay up to date with the current status of the trails. Staff, which includes community development as well as open space staff, will continue working with the applicant on ways to potentially better address the more persistent issues. As mentioned in the staff report, staff has recently provided login information to the applicant for the City Works Reporting System, which is what Public Works uses, which we're hoping should facilitate the reporting as well as the tracking of maintenance items, not only for city staff but for Trump National Staff. And just a quick update regarding the Maryland Ryan Sunset Point Park. Last year, there was a concern raised regarding the deteriorated condition. There is an area B, which is the drainage area with the rocks under the bridge, and that was completed prior to last year's meeting. Then subsequent to last year's meeting, this other area, renovation of area A, you can see in the photograph here, has been completed as well. And regarding the Catalina Trail update, staff has continued to work with the city's geologists, the California Coastal Commission, US Fish and Wildlife Service and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to discuss this project. And again, the city staff is with community development as well as Rec and Parks and Open Space, working together. And currently, the most recent update is that staff will be reviewing a draft list of the engineering items that will be needed to relocate the bridge that is, that is failing with the applicable agencies and as well as the applicant. And this, we anticipate this to occur in the upcoming weeks. So again, the next steps, city staff will be meeting with the pertinent agencies and the applicant regarding the Catalina Trail Bridge Project. Additionally, city staff will be providing the software guidance and training for the applicant in this introductory phase. And city staff does plan to continue to meet regularly with the applicant. And this concludes my presentation. And as mentioned before, the applicant is here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Questions of staff?
No.
I do have one question, Amy. When do we think the bridge? I know it, it, you know, was undermined, what, probably a year and a half, almost two years ago now?
I believe it was, yeah, at least, at least that long ago. I know that we recently had a senior engineer in Public Works assigned to our, our project. And there also is a dedicated staff member in Rec and Parks as well. So with that dedicated engineer, we anticipate being able to move forward a little more quickly now.
Okay. So I mean, it just, we need to push the sister agencies to move on this. You know, it, it has been one of those issues for quite a while. I know it's not the applicant's fault, not our fault. It's kind of a general fuzzball. But whatever we can do to move it forward, I think would be in everybody's best interest.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Other questions? Okay, let's have public testimony.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Bradley, city staff. I just wanted to reiterate what Amy has said. We're always in constant communication regards to the trails and the maintenance. It's an arduous task. It's a lot. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's 18 trails, six to seven miles of trails for our staff members to kind of be aware of on a daily basis. And I think with the City Works software, I think it's going to help us a lot as opposed to the archaic matrix with this, basically it's like an Excel spreadsheet that we have to go through and every issue, we have to go back to that spreadsheet, find that issue and mark it complete. And some of those issues are super minute, like litter on Sunset Trail, you know? And litter, when we go out there and check it, it's like a piece of, you know, paper or something like that. But it also goes up to major issues as well that we do handle. And we set that precedence in terms of handling the bigger issues as opposed to the smaller issues first, and we go from there. And the, the bridge, we've all obviously have been, you know, up to date on that and as to what's going on. But when it first kind of was failing, we had several site visits to that area. Our engineer has already provided their report. I think we have structural engineer and a civil engineer as well and a geotechnic engineer. So our reports have already been provided to the city about, about, I think about a year and a half ago. So we're ready for the next step to make sure that that bridge project is concluded. But I'm here for any questions.
So I'll just make a comment. I'd like to thank you and your leadership for the golf course. You know, I remember 10 years ago, there was friction between the organizations. I think all of that has been ironed out. Amy, I think as far as I can tell, things have been running very smoothly. A great partnership between the, the golf course and the city for everybody's best interest. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And it's a two-way street. I think it's, you know, everyone has been great. And I think the line of communication is a lot stronger as it was 10 years ago. And so I'm very, very happy to report that as well.
Yes, Councilman Parisam.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment and follow up with you. I think I'm in a time warp tonight because I think it's 2018 on, in front of the Planning Commission.
Yes.
That we were having this conversation, struggling to get a system together so we could do exactly what's happening now.
Yes.
So I hope I'm not in a time machine, but I think we have a good problem. We have, and some of these issues are very minor with the fact that we have an issue log, we have all those items, we have those items resolved. The only thing I'd like to add in my closing comments will be if we could do two things as a prioritization on these. And one is functionality. So we could make sure that the, the trails that are not there and up and running, that we prioritize them. And I think it's with the trail, the bridges situation also going down and also just public safety. And we just put some kind of acknowledgement next to those if we have prioritization. We don't want to get too detailed because that just slows things up. But as an agreement between the city and, and yourselves, that we can identify those and put the energy behind that, even though sometimes it's complicated.
Yeah, that would be helpful for us as well. So anything that you guys prioritize, we'll make sure that it's on top of our list to make, to, to complete it. So we're 100% behind that.
Good, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We have another public speaker?
We do. Mickey Rodich.
Thank you. A lot has already been said about what I was going to bring up. But living just above the golf course, I see the work that they do just every day to satisfy their trail maintenance obligations. But there are times that the city can be more proactive with other issues. And one was brought up about the pedestrian bridge. That is not part of their normal maintenance requirement. But I think two years is a long time to try to resolve this problem. It should have been resolved a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Okay, I will, any questions of staff?
No.
I'll declare the hearing closed. The city clerk highlighted what I need to say on here because I always get it out of order. So she's helping me.
Move to file and receive, receive and file.
Second.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilmember Parisam?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo?
Yes.
Mayor Bradley?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item number two under Regular Business.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Lilly.
And that is consideration to review assessment rate options for the Citywide Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District, LLMD, for the fiscal year 2025-26. I do not have any requests to speak at this time.
Take it away.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Councilmembers. I have with me this evening Vanessa Havener, project manager of the Public Works Department. She'll be delivering the presentation. And Deanna Fraley is also, Principal Engineer is also in attendance to assist with answering questions.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. In August of 1992, the City Council formed an, an assessment district called the Citywide Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, which allowed the district to assess $49.99 per parcel for single-family residences. The purpose of the district is to provide funding for the ongoing operation and maintenance of landscaping, street trees, street lighting, traffic signals and others in the city's public right-of-way.
I apologize, Mayor. It looks like the, we are having some technical difficulties with the slides not advancing. One moment, please.
I do apologize.
Don't we have it in the agenda?
Nope.
There, there you go.
We're back. My apologies.
No, not your fault. These things happen.
At this, at the inception of the district in 1992, the annual district levy ranged from $49.99 per the parcel for single-family residents to $23.50, which is the most, which is the most of the, which is most of the parcels in the city for fiscal year 1997 through 98, as defined in each zone. The city designate each parcel in a zone based on a specific benefit each parcel receives. Starting in fiscal year 1998-99, the annual levy was set to $20.38 to $45.79 per parcel for single-family residences. In June of 2005, the City Council decided to pay for the street and traffic signal operation and maintenance costs using a different fund, the 1911 Act Fund, rather than the LLMD Funds. The 1911 Act is funded from an ad valorem property tax collected by the county and transferred to the city and is restricted for use on streetlights and traffic signals. The 1911 Act Fund continues to collect revenues and pay for the costs associated with the installation, operation and maintenance of streetlights and traffic signals. In May of 2017, the City Council set the LLMD rate to zero, which means that property owners were not assessed and the rate has remained at zero for the past eight years since 2017. As a result, alternate funds are being used to pay expenses that could otherwise be funded through the district. This table shows the proposed fiscal year 25-26 budget that are eligible items for, are currently being funded through a combination of the General Fund, Gas Tax, Measure M and the Waste Reduction Fund. The city spends approximately $3.7 million for landscaping operation and maintenance citywide. In November 1996, with the passage of Proposition 218, it ensured that all taxes and most charges on property owners are subject to voter approval and froze all assessments that the rate, at the rate affected in 1996. In addition, it required the city to review all existing assessments to determine if the assessment was in compliance with Prop. 218. The LLMD assessment was exempt, as the exempt, as the assessment was previously approved by the voters. Although the previous slide shows the allowed LLMD expenditures are under the 1972 Act, this table shows that certain expenditures, such as the parks, maintenance and trails and open space maintenance, were not allowed to be paid out of the LLMD funds. Staff is requesting for your consideration the following option. Option one, set a rate of zero. As it has been the case since 2017, meaning that the property owners will not be assessed for the lighting and like landscaping and lighting maintenance district. This option generates no additional funding. And the funding sources outlined in the previous slide will be used to pay for the costs that could otherwise be funded to the district. Setting the levy at zero allows the City Council to continue to consider a levy on an annual basis. Option two, set a rate of $23.50, which was the same rate in effect in July of 1997 to meet Proposition 218 requirements. This option generates in the range of $325,000 to $350,000 in additional funding. Option three, set a rate greater than $23.50, which requires voter approval in compliance with the requirements of Prop. 218. The levy for this option could be set to an amount high enough to cover up to the expenses eligible for funding through the district, which is currently at 3.7 in 25-26. In addition, annual CPI could be added to cover future expenses. Should the City Council decide to levy an assessment at a rate greater than zero, staff proposes using the revenue generated to offset street landscaping and tree maintenance currently funded through the gas tax. This would allow more gas tax funds to be available for street payment rehabilitation projects through the Capital Improvement Program. One thing to note, the Finance Department presented the draft budget assumptions to the Finance Advisory Committee at the April 3rd meeting. Finance staff presented potential financial sustainability strategies, including a review of existing revenue sources, suspended revenues, financial assistance programs and cost containment measures. At the conclusion of the meeting, the fact recommended that the City Council consider reinstating the levy as described in option two. Staff is recommending option two. Set a rate of $23.50. Funds received will offset costs from landscaping and tree maintenance currently funded through the gas tax. Following direction from the City Council, the Director of Public Works will open, will order the preparation of an engineer's report based on the rate directed by the City Council. Upon completion of the engineer's report, the City Council will be asked to consider a resolution of intent to levy annual assessment at a future City Council meeting. This concludes my presentation. I'm here, I'm happy to answer any more question you have. And also we have with us online is Chris Thomas, who is with Harris, an associate, who is the consultant who is assisting us with the engineer's report.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, I just want to just summarize. I mean, this is, this, we come back every year with this item to determine what the levy would be for the upcoming year. And since 2017, as Vanessa said, we've been, the council's been zeroing out levy. And that's because when you look at our revenue sources and what's, what we have in reserves, things looked really good. Things are changing. You're going to, we're going to discuss it some more Thursday at the Budget Workshop. And then of course, on the 29th regarding the CIP. The recommendations here are really to give us direction of what you want to do on those three options. But we see that the reestablishing that fee is probably a prudent thing to do at this point because it'll free up some money that we're using for certain services in the General Fund that would then replace it. And if this assessment goes into effect, it basically adds up to about $330,000. And incrementally, when you add all these small-ticket items, we're looking at something like a million dollars that could help us out with our operations. So that's essentially what we're asking. And as Vanessa said, based on the direction you give us tonight, we'll come back. We have to have a public hearing on this, and that is tentatively scheduled for June 3.
I do have a question, probably for city manager or city attorney. The requirements of Prop 218, I thought there was a provision in 218 that allowed for CPI-indexed increase to that. Why could we not do option three but base it on a cost of living adjustment from the 1997-98 rate?
Would you like me to answer that question?
Sure.
This is Chris Thomas, Harris Associates. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. That escalation clause you're describing could be used if it had been established in the original formation of this district, which it was not. So because that provision was not in it, once Prop 218 was passed, we cannot do that anymore. You'd have to go to... Prop 218 requires any increase in the assessment or any change in methodology would require a property owner vote.
Even normal inflation-adjusted indexing?
Yes, unfortunately, that is the case. And there are many cities across the state of California that did not add an escalation clause to their methodology when the district was formed. And they are locked in, just as you are, at the rate that was originally set or that was at the establishment of Prop 218.
Okay, thank you. That answers the question.
Yeah, and that's a good point because when we come back regarding the Abalone Cove Sewer District, the way that ordinance is written, CPI is actually identified in that language. So we apply that every year.
Okay. Do we have any public speakers? Okay, I'll just opine on this. You know, I love the idea, and I was in favor of this in years past, of setting our rates to zero when the city was in a different fiscal position. I think with what we've seen in the last 18 months, I don't think the city is in a fiscal position to waive all of our fees as much as I would like to. I'm in favor of resetting our rate to $23.50, back to what it was in 1997. It's unfortunate that we can't index that to inflation to make it inflation-adjusted. But, you know, it is what it is. But I think this is one of the things that we're going to have to do this year is start looking at alternate revenue systems or revenue sources to be able to conclude our budget and to make sure that we have a sustainable city. With that, do we have... Anybody else want to opine, or do I have a motion?
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
You know, based on... I'm in line with Mr. Mayor in regards to, you know, previously we set it at zero. But I think this is the most reasonable methodology in terms of raising revenue. By setting at 23.50 and avoiding the Prop 218, we get what we want. We get the revenue that we want. And then we don't have to go through the voter proceeding, I guess, procedures and spend taxpayer money further to increase fees. Like we're saying, we want to keep our city healthy as possible. And I think this is a good way to accumulate the funds that we need for O and M, for the wells, and going forward for the city as well. So I think this is the best and easiest and most responsible and reasonable way to increase rates to get to where we want in our goals.
Councilwoman Ferraro.
One quick comment. This is barely what you spend if you go to the subway for one drink. So hopefully, this is not going to impose a burden on anyone, but it's certainly going to help the city. And I think that's one of the reasons we have to do this.
Absolutely. Oh, Councilwoman Parisam.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also concur. I think this may be one of the easier decisions we make this coming year in this budget cycle. I do have a question on process. Will this be part of the input we get for Thursday? Or if we give direction, when will this come back? I understand we have a public hearing. But can this be baked into the Thursday discussion as well?
So at this point, it's too late to adjust the assumptions that are in the report. We could tweak some numbers that we verbally give out. But the direction we get from this evening will be added into, modified in the budget assumptions. And when it comes back, it'll reflect that increased revenue in June. But again, this directive that you give us tonight will come back in June with the public hearing with a resolution that will memorialize it.
What do you mean we can't get it rolled in? It's 48 hours until Thursday.
Knowing Vina, she probably will.
I know that. It'll be done before we go to bed tonight.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lewis.
I think it's something we need to consider in the context of all the different financial measures. I want it to be included as part of the discussion. I'd prefer us not to sort of do things one at a time without contemplating the cumulative effect on the public.
I think Thursday, we will see the holistic view of it and try to figure out ways to generate revenue. Okay, I will move staff recommendations one and two.
Oh, and three. Yeah, there are three. And then, just to clarify, would be recommendation two B. Which is 23.50.
Well, receive and file the report. We're going to do that. And then direct staff to initiate the proceedings to set the FY 25-26 levy at 23.50. I'm sorry. It should have been item two, option B. And I apologize.
I'm looking at number one saying, set a rate of zero. So that's why I said not number one.
Item one, item two B, and item three.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's because the recommendations in the staff report are written differently than the recommendations you see on your screen, is what maybe.
Okay, so I'm screwing it up again, is what you're telling me?
No, it could. We got it.
Yeah, you're good.
We got it. We just needed a second.
Two B and three.
We just needed a second on the motion.
One, two, B. So one, two, B, and three. I'll second that motion.
I'm killing Councilwoman Ferraro.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Parisam.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferraro.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seo.
Yes.
Mayor Bradley.
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our future agenda items.
None.
I'm sorry, what?
Future agenda items.
Oh, future. I'm sorry.
No, I said I have none. Do you all have any? Or are you just looking at him?
I'm looking at him.
He's looking at me, so I'm assuming it's my turn.
It is your turn, sir.
I'd like to... For a future agenda item, the AQMD has something pending for a vote. And Sierra Club, as members of the representatives of the city, the AQMD, the vice chair and myself, or the representatives, have been reached out to by the Sierra Club to support the adjustment in a ruling for... They're rules. They got numbers here. So it's rules 1111 and 1112. And it's regarding the movement of gas-fired furnaces, the heat pumps. It's not required. It's come a long way. This revised was originally mandatory. And I would like to discuss this to see if we can send a letter in support of that vote, if the council so wishes.
I'm in favor of having that as a future agenda item. I think there are, you know, some interesting things about that, you know? I think there are some people that were cut off by Southern California Edison that may be not as happy with doing something like that. But I think it's certainly something we should discuss.
And so, and we can add this and probably bring it back the first meeting in May because I think the vote for this is in June, so.
It's a June 6 vote, so we have a couple of cycles to bring this back.
If I understand it correctly, it's taking a position on, probably a support position on these two rules.
Okay.
I believe it is what Mr. Sattler talked to us about at Whale of a Day.
So specifically, it's AQMD Rule 1111 and 1121.
Yes.
Any other future agenda items?
No. Councilwoman Parisam beat me to it.
Okay. Oral reports.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Parisam, what have you done for us?
Definitely this week.
No, the last two weeks.
The last two weeks. The last two weeks. Two events was also got to participate in Whale of the Day. And as I said, that day is... Every city has their thing, but we have the Whale of the Day. And I'll put our Whale of the Day up against any other city's.
I'll put our whale up against anybody's minnow.
So, and the other thing I'd like to say that I attended a Rolling Hills Riviera HOA, I believe it was a board meeting. And they provided them with an hour of little question answers and an update on public safety, Western Avenue corridor, traffic lights, the fire zones, and just general information that they focus on typically in their community. And that was a... I felt very worthwhile event. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Lewis.
You know, Whale of the Day was great. And I had one of my boys who said, I don't want to leave yet. Because there's nothing he'd rather do than go home and play on his PS5. And he didn't want to leave. But I had... My mom was with me, and she's quite old, and so I had to get her back. But it was a really great event. And special hat tip to Guy and Lisa for what I thought, you know, matters of opinion, there's no argument, but outstanding musical selection. I thought the reggae band was great. Perfectly suited for a daytime event on the ocean. And so I tip my hat. Nice job, team.
Councilwoman Ferraro.
Well, I was fortunate enough to get to the Whale of the Day as well. And, you know, it never ceases to amaze me how many people come and how well our staff and our volunteers do. And they just made it a really great day for all. And also because I was sick the last meeting, I didn't get to say how wonderful the people of Socorro City were. And that was... It was really an eye-opening trip in a way because I hadn't realized how rural that city is compared with, say, Tokyo. And it was... But they were so gracious and so wonderful to us. And they just rolled out the red carpet. And I understand now that the mayor has been replaced by a new mayor in the last election, which is since we were there. But he and the staff really outdid themselves in welcoming all of us. And also, your kids were there, and they were great. And my granddaughter got to go. And she... Her eyes were really opened to how different things are and how wonderful it is that we could come home, but how wonderful that we could go. And so I want to thank the people there for being such gracious hosts. They were just wonderful. And now I understand they have a new mayor. And so perhaps he will come visit us at some point. And I hope we get to say hello to him, too. What? Well, that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, sir. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it to Whale of a Day, but I got a lot of feedback from the community this past Saturday saying that it was an amazing event put on by our staff, as per usual. So my hat's off to them. And they had a great time. Weather was great. So I got a lot of good feedback. And I'm just glad to be home. We had a wonderful trip, but I've been gone for a while. So glad to be back on the dais with my esteemed members and staff. So thank you very much.
So a couple of things. One, I was able to attend an event sponsored by Mayor Karen Bass of the Los Angeles City, talking about LA 28. And so also, all major events coming to the Los Angeles region. But it was focused around the World Cup, where we're going to have four of the final events here in LA County for the World Cup coming up, and then followed by the Olympics in 2028. A lot of planning going on. It is amazing to see the amount of things that we're getting ready for in Los Angeles in 2028. Their website is up live. I think I sent staff all the briefings that I got from Mayor Bass and the Olympic Organizing Committee here in LA. One of the interesting things is this is going to be, if not the first, the almost only Olympics that doesn't have any new construction. So the 2028 Organizing Committee is finding facilities in the Southern California area that are already built, from SoFi Stadium to Crypto Stadium to the Coliseum, where opening and closing ceremonies will be in the historic 1932 venue that was also hosted for 1984. But up and down the coast of California, we'll be able to see those events. So start looking for those. All the events will be within Southern California with the exception of the, and I did not even realize this was a competitive event, Competition Canoe Slalom, which will be in Texas because there is a world-class canoe competition slalom course in Texas, where we would have had to build one from scratch here in Southern California. What a competition canoe slalom course looks like, I have no idea. And I probably will not be going to Texas because I'll be here for the regular Olympics. They are starting to hire folks. So anybody that is interested in jobs with the Olympic Committee, I actually worked for the 1984 Olympic Committee here in Los Angeles. I was two years old at the time. But really a neat opportunity. And for those that weren't here and weren't able to go to the 1984 Olympics, I encourage you to look out for the 2028. There'll be more to come, lots to do. And it'll be an amazing event. So with that, I will... Oh, what? Oh.
You will adjourn, but I'm sure you know.
I was going to adjourn.
April.
Adjourned to Thursday night.
April 17. That's six.
What? Six o'clock for the Budget Workshop.
Yes, on April 17. Thank you.
The 17th. Right. Thank you. We are adjourned. I know. I make enough noise as it is. I make enough noise as it is.